All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalie Jordan. I am the Vice President of the Board of Directors for the Isla Vista Community Services District, and I will be serving in Ethan's brush trans seats this evening and chair this meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded. Can you please do your call, Spencer?
Director Bertrand. Director Jordan.
Here.
Director Brandt, I say here. Director Freeman.
Here.
Director Hedges.
Here.
Director Geis.
Here.
Director Thurlow.
Here.
So we will now be moving to a public comment period. At this time, any member of the public may speak on matters within the subject jurisdiction of the Board of Directors that are not on the agenda. The Board will not take action on any item not on the agenda except as provided by law. Is there any public comment? All right, one more time. Is there any public comment? All right, moving on to Item Three, Discussion and Action Items 3.1. Consider recommendations on acquiring office space in the Isla Vista Clinic Building. Your report from the Formation Committee regarding recommendations to the Board regarding acquiring office space in the Isla Vista Clinic Building, including but not limited to deferred lease payments for a period of two years, please see Attachment A. We are now going to refer to Director Geis.
So I think you also want to read the motion from our Formation Committee, which is a motion to recommend to the full Board that they consider leasing of the clinic supervisor office space as part of their negotiations with the university, and they seek to determine that the county would consider as part of a lease arrangement that the county would consider postponing collecting rent for two years. So the gist of our conversation is, you know, the county said the rent's going to be approximately fourteen thousand. I didn't hear that directly from the General Services Director, but I will get in contact with her. The difficulty is, they want us to pay fourteen thousand. And in the Formation Committee, we said, well, let's go open up and have a committee go talk to the university and start talking to them about what are we going to do with the two hundred thousand. We also have the internship program in place. We also need a place for our interns if we're going to expand the program. So what we are saying is, does anybody on this committee, I mean, on the Board, have any good, like, strategies where we could do some creative financing that maybe the county would be interested in? And that's what we're kind of looking for on this item, is to say, well, what other Board thing could work that we could go back to the county and reasonably talk the county into that space? I mean, because every meeting we come here, it's vacant. We know it's not being used. The back room is just a storage room. You know, when you really think about these facilities, they're still being paid off by redevelopment dollars. They've got to be used for governmental use. If you really know how redevelopment worked, it's all the taxing agencies and the county that paid for these buildings. And when they're fully paid for, it just so happened on the redevelopment dissolution that the county got title to the buildings back because that's how the law was written. You know, there's nothing fair in giving enough taxes and transferring assets between government. So I'm just trying to think of some ways, you know, at least one member of the Board says, well, I'm not going to make a decision on this because it's not before the Board. And so we need to come back with a good proposal, I think, to the county executive office that she would feel comfortable with or the office would feel comfortable with, putting back before the Board of why and how we could get that space, especially since the university rented it on a lease bid basis, and so did the Isla Vista Youth Project. So I don't know, we need to hand them, so.
Director Freeman.
My first question is, is the fourteen thousand dollar amount that they've talked about for renting that office space, is that, I assume that's under the assumption that we would become the owner of that office space, and like that that would become all our space, only our space?
That's maybe one option.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is I'm just wondering, when this at first, like, had been floated, the idea of doing that, I kind of assumed that we would only be expected by the county to pay some fractional rent for, like, sharing the office with other, like, the third district could also use it as a meeting room like they currently do, which is seldom, and we could seldomly use it.
We've never used it.
Wait, we'll be going to public comment in just one moment. Thank you. Is there any other?
I consider to myself if I've heard that or not.
Yeah.
Is there any other comment on this before we go to the public? Awesome, yeah, your turn.
Since Supervisor Hartman has been sworn into office, we have not used that office.
Awesome, thank you.
Oh, the second thing is to answer your question. I think that at fourteen thousand or whatever the total would be, then that would be for your sole use, just like the other people who pay that. It's for their sole use.
But Jay, I did not.
Oh, wait, one second, we're still in public comment. Sorry, just one moment. I saw Jonathan had his hand up, and then after that, we can come back here, and then we can make a decision, but we should do it in one sweep.
Josh Potkey, as we all know him, he messaged me that the county currently gives the nonprofit Monocito Association freebies of the building in Monocito. They have offices in a meeting room. So he said that it might be shared with the library, but that's something to maybe get more information about.
Awesome.
Well.
One second, we still have public comment.
The sooner for the office space, I believe, the better, and especially so if, like, you could put into there a telephone. That would also kind of go along with the business card idea that, so that you can have someone, you know, a line or a message, like, a messaging or answering machine or whatever that will take calls, put someone in there. Yeah, that's basically what I'm saying.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment before we move back to the Board? This is not going to be your last opportunity. We'll be making a motion and then coming back to the public one last time. We're going to be coming back to the Board. Director Hedges.
Would it violate anything if we were to inquire, say, of the CEO? What might be acceptable?
I'm not a lawyer.
I think that's a motion. I mean, I would.
I would love to make that call.
Let's do it.
Let me just say, I have inquired. And. So there's some complication with this particular building. So you can bring up the Monocito Association. Yeah, they're probably paying free rent. Alpha Resource, Riff Center, they pay a buck and they own, you know, acres of land.
Yeah.
Food bank.
The food bank, they pay a buck. You know, we own the museum, they pay a buck. We own the Libero Theater. We still own the County Bowl. They pay, you know, and so the problem, the difference between this project and those projects is this is still being paid off by redevelopment agency bonds. They entered into a legal set of bonds that says this can only be used for governmental use until those bonds are paid off. And so they also, you know, there is a net cost to the general fund that, I believe, for the community center in this building. And so that's what, and when the organization was formed and the Board members on LAFCO said, you know, if that, if this passes and that tax payouts, don't turn around and ask the general fund for money. And that's the thing that we're dealing with to get the Board to approve is how do those members of LAFCO vote for this if it costs the general fund money? And that's what we have to get around.
So.
So just asking.
Director Thurlow.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask you, would it help move the process forward if we direct the President of the Board to send a formal letter to the county and essentially indicate our interest in a lease arrangement that, with the county for that space that would be over a period of time and which would take into consideration our current financial situation as well as our potential future?
I think that's a great idea.
All right.
Formally open, and that's what Father Ed used to say.
Yeah, yeah.
So moved. Do you think that we could articulate that into a motion, please?
So the motion is.
Will, are you on the Google Doc?
So the motion is to.
Can you add me to it?
I did.
Direct the President of the Board to send a letter to the County Administrative Office asking them to, what are we going to ask them? Asking them to inform us of what amount of money they would need for us to rent that space, taking into consideration our current financial situation.
I'll second.
Second by Director Brandt. I'm going to read back the motion in just one moment, whenever I can find it. Motion from, ooh, one second, let me see. Motion from the Formation Committee to advise the full Board to seek acquisition of the office space in the Isla Vista Clinic Building is not from the Formation Committee. It's a motion.
Where are you on?
Is it, where are we? I'm trying to find you guys. Can you highlight it for me? Okay, motion to direct the President of the Board to send a letter to the County Administrator Office, asking to inform the CSD of the amount of money they need for the CSD to rent the space, considering the CSD's financial situation. Is that correct?
Yeah.
For preciseness, can we change the word administrator to executive?
Executive.
The CEO, yeah.
Would you prefer executive or CEO?
It's the County Executive Office.
That's our title.
Thank you.
So.
And that was a second by Brandt to clarify. Thank you.
So what I wanted to say was, I think this is a great idea. I don't know if we need to include within the motion something that we talked about in Formation Committee, which was the idea of finding creative ways to finance the lease for this space, whether that would mean us trying to come to an agreement that would allow the district or someone spending money on the district's behalf to pay for improvements to the building instead of just paying a straight cash lease or something like that. I don't know, would it be helpful if we were to propose some ideas in this letter? Or is this just a fact-finding thing to see what they, put the ball in the court?
Yeah, I think that the intent of the motion was to get them to come back to us with a hard number, and then us go from there. And once we have a hard number, it's going to be easier to approach other people or to.
This is asking to inform, so they would have to inform us. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, you also.
All right, awesome. We're going to go back out to the public for comment before voting. Any, any public comment? Thank you, awesome. So any comment by the Board? All right, I call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So order, Director Bertrand is absent this evening. We will be moving on to Item 3.2. Consider recommendations on negotiations for grant from the University of California, Santa Barbara. Your report from the Formation Committee regarding opening negotiations with the University of California, Santa Barbara for the publicly pledged 1.4 million, $200,000 a year grant for mutually agreed upon services and project and consider taking appropriate action. See Attachment A. A, create a university grant ad hoc committee charged with negotiating the terms and conditions of attaining a pledged 1.4 million, $200,000 a year grant from the University of California, Santa Barbara. B, direct the President of the Board to make appointments to the committee and announce them at the next regular Board meeting. Would anyone like to explain this? Are there any clarifying questions?
I think, I think what we were talking about at Formation Committee is, you know, that we have an ad hoc committee that goes to start to talk to the university. I don't know if you're involved in that group or if it's a different committee or who they're going to go talk to, but I think we wanted to have three members of our Board be that ad hoc committee that could go start those negotiations and have some discussions with the university.
Absolutely. Awesome, does anyone have any, do we feel like this is a necessary ad hoc committee? Do we feel like this is a necessary ad hoc committee?
Yeah, I think that what creating an ad hoc committee would do is it would formalize the process a little more. I, rather than just, say, sending the Board President to do things, and then the committee would be able to make regular reports. It sounds like the initial letter that the President of the Board sent to the university is started to get the ball rolling on those discussions, and I don't know if you have more to report back on that front, but I think that further formalizing the process is something that the committee thought would be a good idea for us to really start parsing through what things this sort of a grant could be used for.
So does everyone feel like this ad hoc committee is necessary in creation? Is everyone in agreement with that? Yes?
I'll even go so far as to say that, I mean, I've been critical of ad hoc committees in the past, but this, to me, seems like a well-defined and normally structured ad hoc committee.
Awesome.
So now that he said that, now I'm going to get his blood pressure going.
Do it. I'm excited, George.
So here's the problem we have, is that the Chancellor is insisting that, no, let me back up. That's not fair. Let me retract that, withdraw that.
Can we please take that out of the minutes?
And just say, it's become apparent that I have to sit in on these discussions, and therefore, there's an issue with how many Board members are in on these discussions, first. Second of all, since these discussions are incredibly sensitive in terms of, the university is not going to hold them in public. That's just the university's position. The letter that Ethan wrote prompted response from the Chancellor, and that was shared with me, in that the Chancellor has assigned this to David Marshall and his committee to move forward. David Marshall invited Ethan to come to an informal meeting to discuss how to form, how to move ahead, and with some incredibly general ideas. And I think that the university was really interested in hearing Ethan's characterization of what this Board was thinking in terms of university. So it really wasn't a meeting where the university representatives wanted to hear what Ethan had to say without getting too far down the process. I think Ethan wants to make a report at the next meeting. I would characterize this as incredibly positive, incredibly positive meeting, that I think everybody left feeling really, really good about the process, but that we need to formalize it to where, to take the next steps. There's also an understanding that some things may have to move more quickly than other things in terms of funding, and that it's kind of up to this Board to push that out there. And I would say the university is fully aware of all of the issues and challenges in terms of resources right now, including office space, including insurance, so.
Awesome, so you're basically saying that this ad hoc committee can't really work?
No, 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 it should be an ad hoc committee because, first of all, its meetings cannot be open to the public because it's going to be a meeting with the university, so.
I think you were about to explain some limitation on the number of people or something like that.
Well, since I'm sitting in the room, you now have three Board members present, which, you know.
With three?
If you have two people, well, once you have, okay, so it's okay to have two. If you were to have three and I was there, then that becomes the Board. So the issue would be is you need to have two people.
Well, that would be.
Well, we would just put you on the, like.
On the committee.
I think you.
He doesn't want to be on the committee, so we should have an ad hoc committee.
You should have two people that are not, because frankly, when I'm in, sitting in that meeting.
Then we can't do it, can we?
Sure, you can. You can have two Board members.
Oh, just in total?
Two Board members.
Plus George.
And then I'm sitting in the room.
But you're not officially on the committee itself.
No.
Got it, okay.
How hard do I want to be?
How does everyone feel about that? Does that make sense?
I think that makes sense.
I feel unhappy, but it's not like it's correct. So, I mean, I just, yeah.
Whatever the moves the ball forward.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and recognizing that some of the decision-making process, power is not ours, and if the Chancellor wants George in on the meetings, then that's what we have to do. I think that the.
I don't want us to characterize it the Chancellor wants me in on the meetings.
Okay. That the.
That I need to be in on the meetings.
George needs to be in on the meetings to fulfill his duties as a university employee. That, I think that within what we have in the recommendations that I put forth in Item A and B, or in recommendations of A and B, seem sufficient.
Would you like to articulate that into a motion?
Yeah.
Before you make a motion, Jay, this is one time I really want to hear you out in terms of, because I personally don't want to go down the road because my neck is hanging out all over the place on this one. I really am trying to represent two interests in the best way possible, and I don't want to get way, way down the road and get cut off at the knees. So I would really like to hear what your concerns are about this process and what it could produce, and whether anything that you're concerned about, we could fix.
My primary concern is that, as, do you want to? My primary concern is, as you just stated, you are representing two things. And we're now going, we're going into a negotiation where you are, I would have predicted before, and I think that, I'm really, I'm very happy that you've stated this kind of explicitly, you are representing the university at that meeting. I mean, one concern I would have is the thought process on the Board's side with relation to utilizing you as a resource, because there are, at times, we're going to run into situations where you're going to have to be making calls between these things, and I'm expecting you, maybe, and this is my expectation, I'm expecting you to fall on the side of the university on those, on anything where there's something where there's like any contentious, like them up. Many of my concerns relate, the reason why I stated I'm so unhappy about this, mostly relate to the structure of the district is set up at the state and AB 722, which are not, like, that's just, that's just water under the bridge in a way, and AB 722 is coming up, but you're here. I don't, I mean, I guess when you say cut off at the knees, I mean, I, I mean, I'd love to talk about it more if you have, if you have like a more specific thing, but like, my big issue is just that we do have now a Director who is also the person we're negotiating with, and now we are, we're going to have to have a committee with only two people, and when we try to talk about this on our side, like, normally you could appoint a negotiator and that negotiator is somebody you can go into closed session with, and then we could actually have our negotiators talk to the other party. We actually almost can't do that because you're one of the Board members, and so you'll be on both sides of the, like, you're, it's just really broken to me, but it's not like something I can fix today. I mean, I'll actually be voting yes, I guess, to do this, because I don't see any other way of doing it.
Director, Director Brandt?
Yeah, well, I'm glad that we got to the root of that and we kind of decided that that is, those issues derive from things that are structural issues that we can't change as a Board. We operate within a framework. It's called Government Code 61250. And I, I think that what George's concern would be is that once we start to have conversations about funding and the $200,000, I would imagine things are going to be moving very quickly, and this $200,000 is really, this is the only thing we have at this point that is substantive. And the concern would be that in the future, someone would, someone like you would come back and say, well, I wasn't on board with the process with how that whole thing went down.
Let's make sure that, like, someone like you.
Well, I mean, George directed the comment at Jay, so I mean, yeah, so maybe I shouldn't have parsed that, but.
Yeah.
I'm not insulted by anything.
Yeah, yeah. So the, because once we, like I said, once we start talking about funding, we're in a whole nother ballgame. And once we start what essentially is similar, something similar to a negotiation, you know, the, things get really real really quickly. So I really appreciate the fact that George was so frank about that, because if he wasn't, I think I would have been too.
Well, and let me, if I can, if I can jump in a little bit more. First of all, if you were to talk to the people who I'm, are part of the team over there, they would say, I'm tainted goods, because I'm advocating for the district. And the perception of the university, seriously, is, and this was in a quasi-public meeting in front of a representative from the Associated Students, where I essentially stood up and said, we've got to make this district work, and we've got to support it, and we've got to fund it, and we can't be beating around the bush. So, so that's why it's hard for me, because actually, the university folks perceived me as an advocate for the district. And what's funny is the district folks considered me an advocate for the university. What we, I think we should really keep in mind is what, there's no interest of mine personally or professionally in any of this money that's going to get spent here, okay? In fact, it only means that I've got to work longer hours, I've got to spend less time with my grandkids, I've got to do all these other things. And I want to tell you something, as somebody who lived here and who loves this community, I'm here to make this thing work. And at the point where, and I'm ready to quit here, this position, and have the chance to replace me with somebody else.
Okay, this isn't in the, this isn't in the discussion topic, and I don't want it to digress or be something that's not agendized.
It is agendized.
But as you, like.
He's not, he's not saying he's going to quit.
I'm saying.
Don't say that. Don't scare me like that, George.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I'm just saying that at the point, at the point where I get conflicted, really get conflicted. No, 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 at the point where I get conflicted, I'll step back.
It was rhetoric.
So that's enough.
You can't just scare me like that. This is really not where I thought this was going.
I just think as a group, we need to get over this negotiation part, that this is going to be us negotiating against them. It's us trying to accomplish our objectives together. And, you know, we might have to rearrange what those objectives are, because we're not bringing our piece of the money, you know? When I read that $200,000 a year was to be matched, and I know why they wanted to match it, because instead of doing a $200,000 project in a given year, they wanted to do a $400,000 project. And now we're going to do a $200,000 project. That's not what, not, maybe not be exactly what they wanted to do with it, which more is related to infrastructure and those bigger things we wanted to accomplish. And so I think it's us all moving together, and hopefully, they're going to help us get to our objectives in the long run when we eventually get money and can work together. So I, Jay, I just think if we can get rid of that, us versus them, and say, this is just a collaboration to get there, that's where we got to go.
So anyone want to take action on this item? Oh, Director Freeman, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
So, first of all, I just want to say, I don't envy your position, George. When I've talked about this to other people, they made the comment that, like, oh, this must be really hard for where George is sitting, and I agree with them. There was a very unfortunately worded title of an article that both of us were deeply quoted in. I do not agree with this, that title. My, when I talk about conflict of interest issues, to respond to your idea about you monetarily specifically something, they're related to the university. This is about the negotiation of the university. They're related to the university essentially having an employee on here. They're all related to structural issues that they don't come down to you as a person having a conflict of interest, other than your position itself, which is why then I continue to, when we go through these things, I think we, we need to be careful about, and Cindy, you mentioned that the university looking at you is tainted. I mean, it's kind of your, your position is sadly tainted. It's not that, and wait, I don't want to make that sound, I'm not saying that, like, your position is bad.
I don't take it personally.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm saying is that any one who sits in your position is going to end up in that same horrible position, which I do not envy at all, which I thank you for taking the time and actually doing this. The, but it is, but it is the case that, like, yeah, I look at you and I'm like, oh, well, you're going to be leaning a little bit to university maybe, and that they're going to look at you and they're going to think that you're leaning over here, and I think that we, as a Board, everyone else, needs to, needs to, it is true, though, that, like, he, George does work for the university.
But I'm only one vote.
Yeah, but it's in the discussions and all those things.
Right. And the other thing is, at the end of the day, this is all going to be very transparent, because any deal we cut with the university is going to be totally, you know.
That's awesome.
So let's call for the question.
Would anyone like to articulate it into a motion?
I have a motion if there's no further discussion.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
I went for some of Bob's comments as well. So Bob, and then the response of Bob's comments is, every, every contract negotiation is a combination of looking at how the two of us can do something that wasn't possible before, making it better for both of us, but also, there are going to be occasional things in all of that structure that are kind of like the zero-sum negotiation part of that, where there's, there's maybe, like, you're going to buy a car, and there's a certain amount of there where it's like the dollar that you take or a dollar that I have. And so. it's just, um, I, when I bring up these things, I'm, I'm not trying to say that we are diametrically opposed to the university, that we sit down at the negotiation table, everything that we do is opposed. What I'm saying is, is that there will be a few things in there, such as whether, um, we have a liability policy in a certain manner or whether we have, um, uh, uh, who's in control of a certain thing, where, where, where one party might want in one way and another party might want it in a different way. And then we will have to kind of sit down and, and hash that out. And we might both leave unhappy. We might, on that item, even though in total at the, doing the contract, we both leave happy that we have the contract. And so that, that's why it's, and I concentrate on those aspects when I'm talking about, like, I concentrate on the zero-sum aspects when I'm talking about these issues because those are the only places where I think that it's concerning, um, that we, that we have the potential conflict issue.
I'm a collaborative contractor. My whole idea with contract on both parties is I just want to get to the objective. I, I don't want to argue about that. I, I, I could, I just want to get to the objective and that's how you get an effective contract. And, you know, we don't have to argue about the little stuff. We can get to the objective and accomplish the goal. That's what, that, that's what I'm about.
At the end of the day, you managed to buy a car, but the price still mattered. Whether you got a good deal on this.
We're not going to have any cross debate, just to be clear. So if anyone would like to make a motion on this, so we can go to public comment, that would be great.
I have a motion, uh, to approve the secretary's recommendations A and B.
Uh, there is a motion to approve the.
Secretary's.
Secretary's.
Recommendations A and B. If you'd like me to read out the entire.
You can literally just copy paste it. Thank you.
And I would second that.
There's a second by Director Hedges. Is there any comment by the board?
I just want to say, do we want to say, make two appointments to the committee?
Uh, it would be one appointment to the committee because the chair is on, the president's on the committee.
Or just we make it clear that it's going to be a two-person.
Or I guess, like, yeah.
Do you want to articulate recommendation?
Yeah, can I amend my motion, uh, under recommendation B to read, direct the president of the board to make two appointments to the committee and announce them at the next regular board meeting?
Wait, but didn't, we were saying like, do you want to make a suggestion? That was what he was asking, if I'm correct, right?
I'm sorry, what? A suggestion?
A suggestion of person.
Who?
Oh, I didn't say, I wouldn't say, I think we're going to leave that to the president.
I think Bob was just saying that we should specify the two as opposed to leaving it open to the case Ethan comes back with three.
Or he wasn't here for the discussion about the three, so.
All right, is, I'm going to read this out then. There is a motion to approve the secretary recommendation to create a university grant ad hoc committee charged with negotiating the terms and conditions of attaining a pledge 1.4 million, $200,000 a year grant from the University of California, Santa Barbara. And the second aspect, and, um, direct the president of the board to make appointments to the committee and announce them at the next regular board meeting. I think we amended that to say two appointments. Um, and there was a second by Director Hedges. Is that friendly with you? Awesome. Is there any discussion by the board? I'd like to just articulate for the minutes that just in my current, not done with IVP state, I cannot be one of those persons. So I just want to make sure that my time commitment is made clear so that I'm not expected somewhere that I can't make it to.
How long have you got?
Oh, God, May 23rd. I'm counting down the minutes. Um, so, um, yeah, so that's, that's where I'm at. Um, okay, thank you.
Are you going to be swearing in your successor?
Oh, yes, I am. I'm so excited. Um, we're going to be going out to public comment. Is there any public comment? Do you mind stating your name for the minutes?
Gina Fisher. I just wanted to say, um, to clarify that there are many instances, like there can be in government regularly of perceived conflicts or tainted offices. Um, when elected members serve on, on other decision-making boards or are part of those types, and in fact, it's like LACCO retirement boards, your water boards, where you have people of a board going and representing on other boards and whatnot. And so I don't, I don't, it just seems like overblown, but concerns about Director Thurlow sort of having to respond to both the university and to this board. That makes sense. In fact, the, the courts have found that it's often necessary and convenient that members of boards sort of, you know, there's a perception that they have two masters, like by design. This happens a lot in government.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
Yeah, so I'm not going to get too much into that generally, the, the whole board thing, complicated things even more. But because it's a university thing, there's actually no problem because the university isn't a public board of any kind. Um, my primary concern is that there's no end date for this committee. I'd like you to establish one. Secondary concern is a clarification, please, on the nature of these conversations because this is actually a 200,000 a year grant rather than a 1.4 million dollar grant lump sum. Uh, these conversations could be held every year for the next seven years. And I'm wondering why this isn't continuing rather than a, a one-time, quote, terms and conditions, unquote, meeting.
Awesome. Is there any other public comment? Thank you. Director Brant?
So in, I, I, if I can respond briefly, I think that the, whether or not the grant is a 1.4 million dollar grant that is then spent over the portion of seven years or a $200,000 a year grant that would be, need to be renegotiated by a different ad hoc committee is something that is going to be handled by this ad hoc committee, given that the only thing that we all have to go off of is one letter that was written to Assemblymember Doc Williams back in 2015. So, um, like the process of that, I, I mean, that's just a letter, you know? The process hasn't quite been worked out. Uh, but I appreciate your comments about how there is no end date. Um, I would amend my motion, um, to, uh, state that the ad hoc committee would dissolve, um, by the end of this year.
Can you please note that in the minutes? Is that friendly with you?
Friendly to the subject.
And when you say the end of this year, do you mean the end of our?
I mean, the end of 2017.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's awesome. We actually, just the way that we've structured is that we're not going to go back out to the public, but because I didn't tell you beforehand, we'll go back out.
Sure, uh, I'm just quoting you again about the scope. Still hasn't really been answered.
Okay, thank you. Director Freeman?
I, yes, uh, maybe I, I, can I, can I talk after Spencer? I think Spencer's going to respond to him and I'm not.
Go for it.
Okay. Um, I, uh, the earlier comments, I just remember, maybe you might remember that, uh, so the word grant is in here. Uh, and I think I kind of remember Director Thurlow specifically stating that this is not a quote, grant, unquote, at one point. And, and also the word grant might have other connotations to it. Uh, is it, is it okay that we said grant?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, it, grant is a more, yeah, I think it's a better, I think it's the best possible word you can use.
Okay. I remember that too. Okay. Do you have anything else?
Um, and, but, and then there was, was a response, not the second comment that was made by Gabriel, but the first comment was made by Gabriel, um, I guess what it was, which was about, um, I, we'll go yet through it. So, uh, having these conversations occur later, I would imagine that would be essentially like a contract renegotiation. I don't, I don't feel, think that this, once this contract is negotiated, that this, this, this committee wouldn't exist immediately afterwards. It would negotiate something initially and then it would not exist. And then at some point later, we might decide to do something different or something, or we have to essentially have a new influx of the next budget cycle or something. And then we would construct the committee in order to, to work on that. Um, if anything, I mean, I was actually surprised at how long the committee Spencer thought it was going to exist for, but I, I imagine it will exist for less than that amount of time. And I'm out, and I'm not, I don't.
Not, and I do too.
And I have no problem with the amount of time Spencer provided, but yeah.
Awesome. Okay, so I'm going to repeat the motion, then I'm going to call to question if there's no other discussion. Thank you. Okay, motion to approve secretary nomination to create a university grant ad hoc committee charged with negotiating the terms and conditions of attaining a pledge 1.4, $200,000 a year grant from the University of California, Santa Barbara, and direct the president of the board to make two appointments to the committee and announce them at their next regular board meeting. The ad hoc committee will dissolve on December 31st, 2017. That was a first by Brant, second by Geist. I am now going to call to question. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
So ordered, Director Bertrand is absent.
Did you record that I abstained?
Thank you. Um, we're going to be moving on to future meeting dates and future agenda items. I'd like to add one. Um, yes, go ahead.
Uh, basically, I, I do not believe that we can really have a conversation about future agenda items on a special meeting that is open in scope like this. Um, you can disagree and do it, but I, when I was looking into special agenda, special meetings, all of the provisions that, for example, stated in our last meeting about how we can kind of like bend the agenda, uh, for, for, even those don't exist in special agendas.
So I can say anything that I want to be on the next agenda?
You can send the secretary a, uh, formal request to add an agenda item.
Okay, that's fine. Does anyone have anything else?
Uh, the next, uh, the next regular meeting, uh, of the IVCSD is scheduled for Tuesday, May 16th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in this room.
Thank you. Can I please get, and we're going to be moving on to item number six. Can I please get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you very much. Um, called to order, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? So ordered, Director Bertrand is absent. Have a good evening, everyone.